Yeah.
No, I just quickly. No, I reviewed that. So.
Although whatever. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We will stand one nation under God, indivisible, infinite. Now, it was here tonight, petition more, which is the term determine the completeness of application. Instead of waivers, petition for special improvement. By the way, Kelly, then. With hand and. Kelly will sleep when it needs, plus the leader rounds, Eric three nine one, not the app, Wood River Health Services. The property owned by the Wood River Health Services and located at eight twenty three Main Street or Valley around. There is two identified as such as flat fourteen lot forty seven A and R and S alone. And five in the fourth with section E C and ten or ten four, resulting in. We have. It's very particular.
Good evening. No kidding, huh? Geez, far too long.
Oh, we got like reverb on that. It's all good, isn't it?
Oh.
It's okay.
Oh, yeah, it is.
Sorry, technical difficulty.
Very minor technical difficulty.
Right now. Did it go away?
I don't know, Kelly's got to talk again.
Talk again. No, it didn't.
It's an auto tune.
It's not a big deal.
If it keeps echoing, just push the mic aside. That might help right now. That's better.
That's better.
Perfect.
Talking to the mic. Just test it talking to the mic.
Is that better? Yeah.
It doesn't matter.
Great.
I think I have to let it be reverb. I'm sorry, you have to let it be reverb.
Otherwise, it's not going to look forward.
That's, that's fine.
That's always a good.
I'll push it aside. If they're not recording it, that's not ours.
There you go.
Yeah, I'm not going to listen to that, so.
Yeah, but we have to record it.
No, we don't. No, we don't.
What do you mean?
We're, we're, we have, we have, we have a public record, we're taking it down written, we do not have to have that.
So we have some.
We, we're recording it the same way that we always have. We have a tape recorder right now. We've been, she's taking minutes, I don't have to have a video recorder. It's being recorded and it says a technical difficulty, I'm not going to listen to an echo so that we're all confused. Okay, so there. Um.
I agree with that, but oh.
You know, you don't have to agree with it, we, we're taking records the way we have for 20 years in here. There, there's nothing, there's nothing written.
These are unusual circumstances.
Um, no, there's not.
We are trying to accommodate.
We're going to move on, we're in the middle of a preaffirming, and I'm not, we'll discuss this after the meeting.
No, I'm not going to discuss this outside of the meeting.
No, we will discuss it after the meeting, this is not the time and place, now you're out of order.
Refer to our solicitor then.
Yes, you're out of order, to be honest.
Hold on, hold on, gentlemen. The governor has ordered the boards come back. Board of commissioners come back in person for in person hearings. The requirements, the minimum requirements under the zoning regs and state enabling act for zoning are that. Any proceeding from which a void of appeal lies in front of the zoning board be reported either audio by audio means or stenographic means. Whether or not you broadcast it to a larger audience is not a requirement under state.
It is being streamed, and if there's an audio problem, we're getting reverb, and I'm not listening to an echo in this chamber so that I can't understand what the applicant is doing and saying, and that's not my problem, that's the AD guy's problem. This is set up, we use this on a regular basis, if there's a reverb, sorry, he's not here, I'm not correcting him, I'm not a Navy technician. I'm going to proceed with the meeting, if anybody who's cared to be here, this is an open public meeting, we can take people in the chamber, we don't have to play it via Zoom.
Again, I just, that's fine, that's perfectly fine, I just would like to have noted, my objection is not. I'm not recording. Especially considering what the. I think that's what.
Okay, we don't have an echo now.
Is it even on? It shut itself off.
Yeah, it's okay. Okay. Yeah, no reverb, so go ahead.
Okay, can we continue with our meeting now? Okay, so we have attorney Picasso here for Wood River Health. On a, it's a pre-app, so you guys are planning an expansion?
Yes, expansion of the. Build a new building. It's about five.
Sorry, yes.
It's going to have. On site, square treatment system. So it's used. Parking. What we understand, pretty much everything is going to. Here, because Wood River Health Services is a pre-existing contract, we can't expand it unless by special use. We're seeking waivers from I D T, the letter. There are clearly wetlands in the area and they are flagged. But my digits are noted. Site plans, surveys, also. Waiver of the traffic study because the.
Uh, new.
Building with additional staff and patients, expecting only twenty one additional trucks per day. Eight hour day, we're talking. Some hour, that's tiny, especially. For any news.
Yeah.
You have any of that, right?
Correct.
So for those reasons, we just request those waivers.
Good. We'll get to a checklist in a second. Um, did the, the planning board talk to you guys about parking spaces, are you expanding the parking at all?
Yes, we are, and we are expanding it. We're expanding it consistently. For some reason in the background, I stream this whole line, I think that we're explaining even bigger.
Well, you'll be ready for the hearing, I just, I want you to be prepared for it. It's the parking. It's actually in the narrative. It's brought up, it, it isn't, okay, I haven't read that. Okay, all right, we'll, we'll, we'll take that as a comment. All right, so I think you know the routine, we're going to go through our checklist, just double check everything, we have any questions, well, yeah. Ready? Okay, let's do it. Start with item A, three copies of a site plan prepared by, signed and stamped by a professional engineer or professional land surveyor to scale of no less than one inch, he just clearly showed.
Yes.
Name and address of the property owners. I saw that too. Page North Arrow, graphic scale, lot dimensions and area.
Yep.
Flat and lot, zoning districts and setbacks.
Yep.
Existing and proposed structures and their relationships and distances from lot boundary lines.
Yep.
Existing and proposed parking areas and walkways.
Yes.
Existing and proposed landscaping as it relates to the request.
I did see that, there's another claim.
You got existing. You got some of them walls. Patio area, sea landscape, there's no landscape. They push the shrubs.
Okay. The answer would be yes.
Okay. Existing streets, nine one one addresses, well, is the septic system?
Yep.
Yes. List of names and addresses of all property owners within 200 feet of the subject property. Oh, that's an excellent. Any peculiar site conditions or features? You did note there are wetlands present and marked.
They are, yes.
All on, and the topography is on. I make a motion that checklist item A is complete. We'll give it a second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye, aye, aye. Item three, item B is three copies of a separate map indicating all property owners within 200 feet of the subject property and/or all those property owners and entities which require notice under section forty five twenty four fifty three of the R I G L. So I have no property above the list. There's a map of the circle. You guys seen the butters map? Sometimes I incorporate it's all around. You don't, you don't see it. Is it in the book? All right, that's what I was, I started to look. We're both just. Normally, it's assessed as. That's too far. Two hundred foot radius on it. It's clearly. There's. Chip, is that the one, appendix C, is that the one you were referring to?
Yeah, I have that.
That. Is there some reason we had to go up to a half mile, is that?
No, it's a, it's a two hundred foot, it says on a separate map, two hundred foot radius. That's all this resoning, that, that half mile we were planning.
Yeah, that's what they're saying, it's a two hundred foot radius map.
There you go.
All right, and one of those little blocks.
That's what we gave us tonight.
Those are the butters. Oh, there's the, okay. Radius is, it's, it's all in there. My colorblindness is screwing me. Can, can you guys read the map a lot, if I go through the list of the butters?
Who's got good eyes? They have better eyes than me.
I don't, I think it's the one chip. Oh, does that have the little blocks on it too? It's so tiny, I don't think you're going to read it. There you go, I can read this. So we have, well, I don't want to read it. Can you see it? I can, yeah.
He has a map.
All right.
Check them off.
So, um, yeah, well, I'm going to read off the list. So we have map eleven lot twenty four, I think these are all on the same map, to be honest with you. Oh, no, there's a couple maps, a lot, eleven map twenty fours are. Raymond R. Andrews. So these are. They're all plot fourteen. Eleven thirty, it's on the box, then it's go. All right. All right, so that's eleven twenty fours, Ray. Raymond Andrews. Right, you got that one? Yep. Uh, map fourteen lot fifty seven, Ken Ma. Probably towards the top. Yeah. Yeah, got that one. And then map fourteen lot ninety nine, it's Lauren and Susan Andrews. That's down here. Ninety, okay. Fourteen forty seven A is the applicant, that's Wood River Health. Yep, that's, that's. Fourteen forty six B. Thirty four. C L, LLC. Fourteen forty six B and thirty four. Fourteen forty six B. And thirty four. That's that little solar field. The thirty, yeah, B thirty, forty six B thirty fours, LLC. Yeah, that's to the left millimeter.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, okay. Um, Chelsea Lynn Garrish is forty four. Forty six B and thirty four. That's the same.
It's in Cardinal Lane, isn't it? Flat down there.
Oh, that's all right. That's, that's in that little plot, okay. Okay, so that's, um. Four A, so it's fourteen. Yeah. Four A, forty six B thirty four. Right. Okay. Then we're going to do, so there's going to be a six B, so it's map fourteen. Six B. Six B, forty six B thirty four. Yeah. Which is Edith Schwab.
That's that.
Yeah, there's like a little house flat down in the bottom left. Um, so this, there's a bunch of little lots spun off of that, and they're all going to be sub, sublots off of the main, um. So we got map fourteen forty seven, which is Albert. Hawkins Junior. Yep, right there. Yeah. That is the sort of, um, for map fourteen lot ninety seven Newcastle Realty. Over here, yep, go. Yep, between all those little pieces. Uh, map fourteen is. Zero forty six Bs. So that's over in that corner as well, is that open, is there open space in there or something? That's Woody Hills Development Company. Yep, what are you doing, Joe? There's probably zero main street, that might be the open space or something. Map fourteen lot. Four seven B. New Canaan. Cliffs, yeah, that's it. Yep. It's right above, right behind Wood River Health Services. Yeah, that, the one off to the right.
Yes.
Yeah, right here, Clutch Cliffs. Um, fourteen. Lot two A, forty six B thirty four, which is Carl and Casey. Get back over here again. Four A. Miley, Maki, sorry if you're listening, and I don't know how to pronounce that one. Um, okay, so we're down to map fourteen four B. On forty six B thirty four. Yep. Map fourteen. Forty nine is Woodland Properties. This is. Straight back here. Got it, we have to.
Jeff going.
Map fourteen lot ninety. Right over here. Sylvia Benjamin. Yeah. Map fourteen lot forty six C, which is New Contra Cliffs. Yep, that's it is. That fourteen lot forty seven C, which is Contra Hills Limited. Yeah. Probably, yes. Um, so forty seven C. This seven C is right here. That's what Dan's trying to tell us. He's right, you know, you're right. I'm just good, thank you. You are, why don't say that? Not often enough. Um, map fourteen, we got lot two B and forty six B thirty four, so some lot to be. Yeah. Which is Chloe Warren. Uh, and again, we got another sub lot, so map fourteen six A on lot forty six B thirty four, which is Scott. In our, in our lease, random. Yep. That is all, it's all.
Everything I would question this, since we, in the past, we. Obviously, we've seen these with a map of the numbers. That's all, so.
We have it.
Okay. So have you been able to?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, you're looking at the list I'm looking at, and that, the one in the book is two.
Yeah, I saw your list, I was like, uh.
It's, yeah, we, we have that. Um. I make a motion, item B is complete. We get a second. Right around to a second, any discussion? Chip had it, he's just wondering about that man, so all in favor? Aye, aye. Oh, yeah, but you can speak up.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure I didn't need to.
Yeah. No, no, that's your, you're fine to speak up, yeah, just don't go on anything unless somebody has to step off tonight. Over again, item C, soil erosion and soil water control plan, supporting calculations based on the standards approved by the USDA Soil Conservation Service. Conformity with RI erosion and sediment control in.
Yeah, we bought a narrative. An narrative. For the end. So. Okay, yeah.
I make a motion that item C is complete. Second, second. Ronnie, any discussion on that one? And you want to look at it a little more? Fine. I'm looking, I'm just asking, I'm not.
Appendix D there.
All right, good, okay. Okay. All in favor? Aye, aye. Checklist item D is a letter from a biologist indicating there are no freshwater wetlands on or in proximity of the site such as the application is required by the Royal Freshwater Wetlands Act. A physical alteration permit is issued by the RA Department of Wildlife Management and where applicable, the US Army Corps of Engineers shall be required. There's a request to waive that. Any discussion on waiving? We, we know there's wetlands there, they, they know it.
It's like the wetland.
It's like it.
So my only question is, I know this has been an existing structure. And you're going up with another two stories on it. So this, so just so we're all clear, we don't really think that that would have any different impact on the. I think what's going to happen, sure, is that appendix D, which is his, or all his hydrology reports and drainage reports are going to capture anything that that building or parking would do. And I think when he goes for septic permits, he applies, probably hasn't got a permit for yet, that's actually moving to the wetlands of the building. And if DM is going to kick it back, that's what will kick it back right there. And you've got a road in between, the access road is between any development and the wetlands, so I'm comfortable with what he's got, but again, I know different thought process.
It's, I mean, that buffer is outside of, where, where does the buffer, it's like within the road?
It's the other side of the road. Yeah, it's got a hundred foot stream buffer, and they've got a fifty foot wetland buffer, it's all the other side of the pavement.
Yeah, I don't know.
The access road.
Yeah. If you looked at the map, it's, it's way outside of the building envelope, so it, it should be a non-issue, but there are wetlands there, so you have to know it still.
Oh, it's well outside the, the buffer, and they recently got out of approval. I think we sent in a copy, although I can't.
It was on the, it was on the desk when, when I got it, so, so we do have a copy.
An narrative, so it was pending approval.
Oh, yes. Yeah, is that approved? Is that the application, is that the approval?
It's approved.
It's approved.
Yeah, it's approved.
So it is a waiver request.
I make a motion to grant the waiver request.
Second. Any more discussion? Of the special, no, all in favor? Aye, aye. Item E, location of existing septic system. Construction requires removal by, approved by RID, yeah, division of land resources for ISDS or change of use permit for the special proposed activity.
That's what they've got, that's what they've provided tonight, for go to MTS. For the new construction, the existing, the using, so what's there.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Aye, aye. F is a traffic study addressing potential impacts of the proposed activity, and again, as a waiver for that.
Yes, for a waiver, but in the narrative from the last. The last section, you've got a traffic analysis, so I'm not sure. Kelly described what's going on here, so.
You guys want to look at it a second? Six point two, page eleven, twelve.
It's. Right in the. Regular narrative part, so under six point zero. And I'm not sure what it is, but six point four is the conclusion, which is.
Actually, you're not in very, I'm just trying to. Yeah. Oh, here. You're, you're in it. Let's take a second, just see where we're at. Maybe soon as we have attorney Picasso here, can you give us, can you give us a walkthrough on this? The traffic, the traffic analysis, have you, have you reviewed this one yet? No, all right, well, I didn't know, all right, I don't mean to put you on the spot, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes.
No, I don't, no, I just didn't know if you could give us a summary of it or not, that's okay, because it's not that long, we can read it.
When you look at it, I, I will say this, from my perspective, it does, it, it clearly is going to increase the traffic, but it says here in the conclusion that. It's going to be one vehicle every three months. So. That's. Not to let the attorney off of care, but, but it, it, I mean, as far as, if we're looking at, does it provide a traffic study? I would say what's provided here is a traffic study, and that's up to us to determine if we think it's.
Hmm.
Going to be impactful. But I think these might require. Yeah, so. A peak change of sixteen percent.
Yeah, so a peak change of sixteen percent. No, I mean, the, the access road has a pretty long. Um. Lead in and exit off of the, the health center entrance anywhere, the parking area. God, I mean, if, if they got into a stacking situation, which they wouldn't, they could probably get what, fit twenty cars or thirty cars there. So that's. There's more than enough room to handle the, the traffic. And then there's not a mass exits of the facility to begin with. Um, because it is, it's, it's an overlapping, it's an appointment based. Yeah, and, and I mean, they.
That particular spot on Route three that's zero, which.
Right, and it's the actual exit that dumps onto Route three has got a huge sight line, both left and right. Right, I think this would be a better spot. Um. And kicking back to what Chip said is, I mean, this, the, the, it's a traffic analysis. It's not a full blown study, but I mean, I think all the data that we're looking for is here. And I don't think the staff.
The waiter.
Correct. Right, so that's.
We couldn't accept this.
Right, it's not an actual traffic study, but they provided, and that's where, and I agree with Ronnie on this is.
I didn't realize that. Sorry.
It, it's an analysis, so it's, it's a lower level, not as in depth. Um.
I make a motion, we accept the way.
Oh, second that. Any more discussion?
I just think it's, thank you. I obviously know here. I love what they provided us. I didn't realize that it didn't necessarily meet the level of study.
Yeah, no, that's okay. It's easy, it's easy to miss that because we're looking at it. It's professionally done. Um, and a lot of the key data is there that we would look for. Big song and dance, we don't need all the fluff. Sure. Um, I don't, maybe some of you guys would like it, but I don't. Um.
No, studying valves going out there and taking car counts and spending a lot of money. Um, and if this covers it, then this covers it. It's a commercial entrance already. And what's, what are you gonna do? Put a light out there? In reality, like you said, it's something that's people have a, an appointment to go there. It's not a peak of seven o'clock in the morning and five o'clock at night.
So, I mean. Touching on what you've just said too, is it's, it's more of a commercial application. It's a residential special. What are all the zones around it? That most of that zone commercial, and not all of it, but I mean, that whole area is slated to be manufactured, commercial around that exit. I mean, we're right off the exit of ninety five. We're not sitting in the middle wooden road. So, I mean, it only makes sense. So Ronnie has a motion.
One, one last question. They're here first, and then they're going to planning, or they've been to planning already.
They've been to planning already.
That master plan approval. And would that be a requirement of master, or at any point from the planning department for a traffic study or?
Preliminary.
Right, so you are gonna have to do it at some point, Kev.
I don't think so.
Okay. I'm gonna.
All right, so we had a motion from Ronnie. Did we have a second from Joe? Some more discussion. That's okay. That's why we have discussion. Throw them.
Just what I, what, what worries me is that if the planning board is going to, or some later day, the planning board could ask this. I don't necessarily want to do anything on this board that prohibits the planning board from, from doing.
One has nothing to do with.
That's, I just, you know what I'm saying? I just, I don't want to make a, a statement here that now the planning board's like, oh, our.
It's a. It's.
And if it was, too bad. We're separate board doing our job. If the planning board don't like it.
Well, but at the same time.
You gotta get used to that. You're on this board. You're not on.
We're not, Ronnie's absolutely right. It's a different race and a different stadium. It's a different set of hurdles, right?
Sure.
And.
We're certainly not here to, to do their job.
Yeah, we don't have to appease, we're not here to appease the council or the planning. So don't, don't blur the two. We're here to administer zoning ordinance, period. Planning will handle their hurdle. There's nothing that we're gonna do in here that's gonna stop them from putting those hurdles out in their stadium.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Good analogy. Okay. That's, he's learning. It's okay. Um.
I would never imagine that they're running a hundred and one vehicles in and out of that access road an hour.
No.
I think that is, that is an overestimation of the vehicles coming and going from that entrance.
Does, does that entrance also take care of the problems behind that?
Because the, because the people that use Conarch three will use that.
Okay.
With Conarch. One will use it, but it loops around.
Yeah, it's a big.
Go in and go to Conarch two.
Okay.
Coming the other way.
So it's a bit of a. Here. Should we worry at all about the potential impact that it has on other people using that?
It doesn't appear big enough. I mean, it, it can be your concern. It's. So just for the record, I served on the board up there for probably close to ten years or not quite, but almost. Um, so I'm very familiar with the operations up there and the amount of traffic. And, you know, even at meetings, it's, it is, it's an in and out, and, you know, it's. You probably see a, a car leave every five to fifteen twenty minutes.
I think that's right.
Yeah, it's high, but I mean, it's an overestimation. But what Chip's saying is you're, you're also serving an elderly care facility with additional. Traffic on the access road that's not necessarily Wood Rivers. Parking lot, they're dumping onto a side. Yeah, road.
But it's well constructed.
It's huge. That, are you familiar with this spot?
I'm not really. Although I was just, it's like, I just, I would hate to say, yeah, we're wood here and we're like, we screwed so other places.
I mean, I would hope that if they had an objection, I would hope they would bring it forward, either in writing or, or personally.
Right, and then, and planning will get them into a traffic study. Like I said, trying to give you a visual on it, it's a very long, straight. Gradual uphill to all the way to the back to Conarch cliffs with the elderly care. Depending, there's a one, two, and three depending on how you break it down. Most of those people aren't leaving that facility either. It's elderly care facility. There are some people that, that live there and they, they. Do have vehicles and they leave, but a lot of them, it's, it's assisted living. They're there and they stay there. Um, it's probably about the same amount of traffic you see over here at the Women's Development Project. We're, we're at a meeting and what, every ten minutes, there might be one car that goes by, or that fast. But there's a, there's a ton of room on that access road. You, where you've been stacked a ton of cars. Yeah. Well, yeah, these, these gotta learn a little bit too and, and get up to speed. It's a, it's a concern. I'm, I'm fine with it. That's part of the discussion. So, we good? We got a motion? We got a second? Lot of discussion on that one? Um, all in favor of waving?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
All right, item G, a separate site plan indicate existing and proposed topography at two foot intervals.
Yeah, that's. Several layers of it.
I make a motion, checklist item G is accepted.
Second, discussion on topography. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Lastly is H, provide evidence that the proposed water supply has sufficient supply to support proposed activity in its drinking water.
Note number four on the site plan, I think there's actually a part of the narrative, it said that the test of the water and they're proposing two hundred and twenty gallon pressurized well storage tanks. Uh, and that should be adequate. And they've actually also got a note there that the town happens to will not be held responsible if there's any inadequate, if there's inadequate water supply.
Is that a, is that a community well? That's one of them.
Got to, got to.
Yes, that's gotta be, yeah, it's gotta be.
Funny, it doesn't mean any businesses. This, this thing, twenty scale, things right. Geography.
Okay.
Yeah.
State approved it. Old one, well, it's an old well. Everything kind of just kept the law there on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's uphill, isn't it?
If it's a public well.
That's the dog, you know, it's not that great.
They're not feeding off any of the.
Uh, they said. I think it did. Actually, there's another forty about this avid engineering.
And the fifteen, it's been like. So that's a public well, so I mean, the Department of Health's gonna oversee that anyway. Um.
It sounds like the engineer's got two hundred and twenty gallon tanks, pressurized tanks to have some reservoirs. That's.
It's just interesting. It's different.
Yeah. They have to satisfy the board health.
Fifty foot.
The bedrock.
Fifty. So.
Seeking for experience, right?
Yeah.
So just based on their, the other report. They do know that the existing well water system is undersized.
Plus the tanks.
Yeah. No, I mean, so it's just, I mean, like, we're. Two additional one.
So what do you think, at some point? Does the Department of Health care? They care more about the quality than the volume.
Quality, yeah.
Yeah. So the volume, I mean, that's, that's more gonna be on the. Property.
Absolutely.
To service their own need. Um, so at some point, they might have to.
Drill in a well.
Drill, drill in a well, or do, do what they're doing with holding tanks, that, you know, that.
It, it would be probably difficult to drill a well there in the state climate, so you probably think a modified well they have. But that, that should be supervised quarterly by the state anyway, and as an operator, so.
Um, okay, so that's not something that has its own board, we shouldn't get too much out or.
Yeah, it's regulated heavily by the Department of Health.
And, and they've supplied evidence that they, they realize they've got a little issue there and they've tried to address it and. What else could they do? There's nothing you can do.
In general terms, not specific to this project, I, I'm thinking of all the people that have applied. Wells have never, they've all been kind of preexisting and the board looks at it. A lot of times they're spending servicing and working unless there's something odd. If you have a residential well that's only handling like a, a two bedroom house and then they're gonna put a motel on it. Then we might not wait because we know that the, the volume of the well wouldn't be able to handle it, so they'd have to. Is that a good, it's really good.
Yeah, well, so this appears. To this. Uh, so does that mean you're going to. Water supply requirement by. Percent. Or are those, so what I'd like to know is, okay, we're gonna have offices, they're gonna be up here, you know, something like that, that says. Yeah, we're going to increase the water. Needs, but not, but not by two hundred percent, but that. Put in by twenty percent.
So the application, so that the, the addition is mainly for administrative offices, correct?
Administration, administrative offices, analysis.
The septic system was approved on using seventy two gallons a day. Period. Right.
So it's seventy two.
That's what it says. It's only a thousand gallon tank.
At thirty seven elderly units, so how's that possible? It's like a half a bedroom.
He's also using a magnifying glass.
Oh, you tell me that.
No, I have to. That's seventy two gallons of both for that. Every day we talk seventy two gallons. Disagreeing.
It's a half a bedroom.
But so, again, it's, you're handling mainly bathrooms there.
I'm John. Yeah. Doing showers. I, I can't read it, John. So I'm not even gonna try to.
Yes.
Seventy two.
Well, that's proved.
Jelly full rate, seventy two gallons.
Yeah.
So what's your proposal is you're going to do is you're going to add two big one, one pressurized, so they're gonna have six, one hundred and twenty gallons pressurized down. Not with drilling, not expanding the capability of the well to use the rice.
Yep.
And that's gonna make the new business over in forty years.
Part of them. Again, a corn or rye, just red. Sounds like they only need seventy two gallons a day of water, period. This is my opinion. Uh, butters. Wells have that same aquifer. But their proposal is that we keep our same well, but we're gonna fill two extra one hundred and twenty gallon or whatever. What's with that? Specifically, you know, from what season, maybe nothing, but like you get right August. Looking at. Well, water.
I don't, I don't think with the increase, because on this staff, when I was there, they were flirting with low sixties in staff. And I think on that, the, the narrative, they were pushing maybe up to seventy seven. Um, I don't think the patient traffic is gonna go up dramatically either. We sat through a very. Long and interesting hearing with the northeast water. Of Ferrari. Yep. It's talking about dealing with campground, it's kind of influenced the drought out, so everybody's very upset.
The same thing you said.
If, if the campground was gonna defeat the surrounding areas of wetlands and things like that. And the reality wasn't even anything like I had ever imagined, right? It was nowhere near what it's thinking would be. Um. Well, I know Dan and Ronnie and I have a pretty good background with that just in past. Education. But like, um, you here for that one? Um, northeast water solution, Robert Ferrari.
Vinnie.
Yeah, that was Vinnie on Ashway Pines.
Oh, Ashway Pines, yes.
Bob Ferrari was probably one of the best people we've ever had testify since I died.
Yeah, it was incredible.
He was, he was, I mean, all of us were just dumbfounded because he brought it, brought it down to a level, but he was very detailed. And he wrote it to layman's terms, so it was very interesting. Um, so I, I don't, I don't have a problem. I'm gonna, it's, it's a concern to throw out there, but I don't.
I mean, interesting topic to bring up with the, you know.
Planning might address it more in depth.
As far as them providing what they should, I think they've done a great job here, so I don't need to hang you up on that. It's just, um, just something that we should. You know, I just take the decision that is going to have peripheral effects on people, but that would be considered.
Now the next closest waters, I mean, you have Conarch, those wells. Um, that housing flat down on the far left is a fair distance away from hell.
The truth is, John, that Ronnie brought up a good point. If that is correct, it's seventy two gallons per day. I mean, that's all the water that they're anticipating going into a leach field. That's satisfied BM, that that's what they're doing. What do they put someone to drink out of seventy two gallons? And we're really talking, the size of building would tell me it's something more than that, but. Clearly, that's what their, their engineers have designed it as. We have to take that at face sight. It's not, not our job to.
I agree with Dan. I don't know that we need to look behind this report from an engineer. Except that they have sufficient water supply and how they plan for, how they plan to retain sufficient water supply.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm.
And they've got the note on the plan. It's not all the, according, and I know the planning board requires that too. It's, this is no guarantee of water. The applicant, it's his job to go figure that out. Chip brings up a good point, because that doesn't, if it affects the neighbors, then, but I think in this case. I think that they've met the, that threshold.
Again, may that notice. Send it up to them.
And that is, and that's a good point. At, when we go to the hearing, if there's a model that does have an issue, come in and there's nothing saying. That we can't send them back to the drawing board to come and present with a water expert. Hydrologist.
That's I agree with what they provide directly to us.
Yep. Okay, so did we, I don't, I'm getting lost. Did we have a motion yet? So, there's a lot of discussion.
I make a motion to, uh, to accept that the report that they've submitted and that item.
H.
H is complete.
We have a second. Second. Any more discussion? We've got a lot already. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And so we, everything is good to be.
It's a, like to entertain a motion that the checklist is now complete.
So we. Have we got a second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, so we gotta figure out a date of this one. We gotta, we gotta get a few things coming on the plate.
What do you do next for the planning board? What do you do next for the planning board? Uh, we're not at all.
The health center usually deals with things in a way. Well, no, I mean, most things over there typically are. Long term future projects, I mean, I I don't know that they have a scheduling result, but I know they like to use A to Z. Maybe, maybe they have a window or something like that. Typically, it's that things take months to to evolve, uh, well.
Let's just put it on for next month first.
Well, we have Rebaity next month, we have another pre-op for another appeal of the plan. So we'll be the, the Board of Appeals twice on one night.
Yeah, that's just a pre-op.
That's a pre-op. All right, so let's say they can, let's do this one first. Pre-op, get where we get, get where we get. Well, that's fine, because I mean, having having, um. Secondary meetings on Thursdays, it's starting to get tough for me. Next month on.
Yeah, the pre-op should go quick.
I'm planning to do it, we'll have, it might be in a little time, it's just fine, as long as it always a bit.
Did we, did we close a public hearing for Rebaity?
No, no.
No, that's open, so we've got the plans under review, they're going to need a lot of time, no?
No, Rebaity is more going to be decision, I mean, they, they potentially could come back.
I want to, but, uh. But it's open. We discussed it from the last hearing, so that must point to be down for decision.
Yeah. They exhausted their their talking points on that, and they left it for us, so we're.
Well, they could come back as we left it open.
Yes.
Bottom line is, you left it open for us.
Yes, so so we would have discussion on finding the fact, make a decision, so that. See what we get, sometimes you have no discussion on simple things. Just fine, it's better to have it on the record.
Are you bringing experts, Kelly, for this one, whatever?
Oh, yes.
And how much time anticipate?
I'm hoping it's not going to be a lot of time, given that they. Information, narrative. Plans, but, yeah, I'm going to bring the the landscape guy, the engineer, I'm right with this. Somebody from work.
All right, so that puts us in September. A regular meet is the sixteenth, I can't make the sixteenth. So I can do the fourth Thursday, the twenty third.
And when do we have Rebaity on?
Probably the sixteenth, so I would. So right now, then. I can't do the sixteenth in a lot of town.
I can't do the twenty third if it's going to be a Rebaity hearing, if it says it doesn't matter.
Is anybody on Rebaity? I'm off, you're off, all right, so he's got, he's got to be here for them. I could do them, I don't know if we have the chambers, I could do the ninth. Ninth doesn't work for me, all right, so ninth is all. Um, I could do another, I could do one standing, but I mean, I don't know what other boards are meeting. So this is the master. We can. So I, since September, I see nothing here on the fifteenth. Or the twenty second. So what do you want to try?
But the twenty second.
He's not available at fifty.
Who's that? Loses it, is Tiana back? Yeah, not yet, okay. Are you well, twenty second?
That's a Wednesday, so no.
Oh, you can't do Wednesdays. Stay on the back on the twenty second. Oh, geez, oh. Can't do that tonight. It looks like twenty first on a Tuesday is open.
Yeah, Tuesday, Wednesday. Uh, twenty first on the move, Charles Towns, yeah.
All right, yeah, well, yes, well, that's, we got, um, she do Fridays, but nobody's got to. All right, well, for them, you.
Didn't say Saturday or Monday.
Yeah. They, um. Regular meeting in October. It goes, yeah, it goes to, uh, it goes to October because, um. We could do the seventh or the twenty first.
So the twenty first is our regularly.
System, so that's juvenile hearing, the one that's at the police station. Um, so the seventh appears to be open. And then. You have the conflicts Tuesdays and Wednesdays. Tiana should be back by October, so we potentially could do. Wednesday, October thirteenth to twentieth, if we need to. But by the time you do the twentieth, we might as well just do the twenty first. Well, if you want to get, uh, Wood River going out of seven. Doing the two Board of Appeals ones kind of. Yeah. One, I mean, I'm not opposed to give it that long, thanks. It's up to you guys.
I can do that.
How was October seventh for you, Kelly?
Looks good.
Tiana? Yeah, I mean, Tiana's here, um. Yeah, but one of you would be all right, so. That's a Thursday. So we're doing the seventh and the twenty. Yeah, we'd have to do the seventh and the twenty. Assuming that.
But the seventh would just be for Wood River.
Just, yeah, so we would, we'd have to kick Rebaity to the twenty first if they can do it, the problem with that, it's the same problem we had all summer, is there's a lot. Maybe not so much now, but.
Yeah, but we can't have a meeting at all in September.
No. Well, we just, we don't have the ability, nobody's going to be there, on those today's that are open for the chambers. We can't go here. One day, you can't do. I can't do the ninth, you can't do the twenty third.
Definitely, again, that I think that only affects Rebaity's.
Right.
Why don't we, why don't we do, why don't we do this the twenty?
Why don't we do Kelly the twenty third? So September second is open too, on a Thursday. Rather than October. We could do, we could do Thursday, the second.
He's not.
That's too close for notice.
Kelly on the twenty third, and then we'll schedule our regular meetings.
Oh, you mean. Seventh for Kelly.
No, Kelly on the twenty third of September, September.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Kelly on the twenty third of September, and then our regular meeting in October for Rebaity.
You came back the sixteenth, you said, so twenty third is the next one. Can you make the twenty third? I can do, yeah, twenty third, I can remember, I can. Oh, okay, yeah, twenty, I could do the twenty.
Yeah, you do more?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, all right, so we'll do. These guys, Kelly.
Yeah.
Whatever else is. Twenty third of September for.
It just makes our schedule easier.
Yeah, and then let's see if we can push Rebaity off to. We're going to have first. Chip will be here, Dan can't sit for, so they have to be flipped out. And then we have, we have the other appeal that's coming in too, we got to fit them in, so I I think they would, even we don't have that yet. No, that's not, yeah, we don't have it, we know it's coming, so they might catch the tail end of the twenty third, because that would be a pre-op.
Do you know who it is? I don't think so.
Not yet.
Question is whether.
You need may or.
Right, yeah, yeah. So I'm curious.
Yeah.
Right. Well, rather than the stuff sketch, we're going to be other matters, it's just focus on this. Yeah, no, I, I, so, all right, so we're going to, we're going to do Wood River on the twenty third of September.
Are you going to have to get notice out to the other lawyers that we can't have a meeting September?
What's that?
Your hand move on.
We should be good, we'll see on the front of it. It's, it's your source by now. Is that on yet? Oh, yes. That's not on agenda for tonight, right? Maybe this, um, all right, so the, uh. Bryant appeal. When did we pick that to, do you know, was it supposed to be now?
We're supposed to get some wetlands information.
What did we, we, we gave him a date from that.
Okay, good night.
Um.
Supposed to get biologist out there. A letter. Yeah, a letter.
And revise butters list and notice to the, to the, uh.
We, we gave him a month or two off to get that stuff, the biologist's letter, and I believe that was supposed to be tonight, it wasn't put on the agenda. Um. I would put it on the agenda for the twenty third. Um, somebody should contact him and tell him he's on, maybe contact Tony as well. Um. To see where that is at, if he's, if he's getting any resolution of. Mr. Bryant, if he's got his ducks in a row.
Can I just say one thing on that, so? We reach out to them. Hey, you're on next month's agenda, hey.
Yeah, between now and next month, that that's what I just, he's going to reach out, he was, he should have been on the agenda tonight, I don't know why he was not. Um, irrelevant, but he should have been on, because we kicked, we kicked him two months. That should put him here, tonight, I, I, it doesn't, it's irrelevant, he's not on there, but he should be on there for next. Um, I mean, if we look at the minutes, I don't know if that, if we caught that in the minutes. So it was, uh, it's just an oversight that it wasn't put on, um. It would have to get put on anyway. Right?
Yeah, what's worse than you go continuing it?
Yeah, if he doesn't have it ready, we can continue, but I mean, it's not a race, zoning official should chime in on that too, to see where he's at, because Mr. Bryant isn't part of the town. For that, and all that matters, so. Let's, let's, uh, reach out to him, let him know that he's on the agenda, and, uh, if he's not ready, we'll just continue it, you know? All right, you want to do minutes? Sure, I make emotionally accept the meeting minutes, June twenty fourth, twenty twenty one, ironically, that was the, uh. Pre-op for Chris Bryant, which is sufficient with a couple of things. Let's see, we can actually check, uh, president, Chip was on Zoom. Um, absent, running for the. Phil's going to have some for once. So, um. So we have a, a motion to accept the minutes of June twenty fourth. If you weren't, you were on, so we got a second, we got any discussion on? All in favor?
All right, aye.
That's approved, all right. So. Would also like to discuss kind of where we started tonight with. The taping of the meeting, um. Because no, nowhere has anyone from the council or anyone ever made us privy to. Being taped, other than what we've traditionally done as far as auto, audio tape, minutes and transcript, this is, this is an aside from where we started before. Um, the. The video. Recording of this and posting on YouTube was something that's just happened. Nobody's ever addressed this board and told us that they were doing it, it just started, and I would like an explanation as to why we're doing it, or what town ordinance or. Regulation as to why we're using YouTube and, um, why we're all being videotaped, this is an aside again from Zoom, Zoom was a special. Circumstance, the doors are open now, applicants and neighbors can come in, um. If somebody's on YouTube, all they're doing is watching, they're not, they're, they're viewing the video. Um, they're not attending the video, and I'm not. I'm wary of that. Um, so I, everybody, I want everybody's opinion on this, and I want to see, I want to, I've asked pair to look into where we're at as far as. We've been following the state laws as far as recording, I'm, I'm not, just, I'm not, um. I'm not trying to say that we're not going to be an open government, we're hiding anything. I don't know why we're being videotaped and this is being posted and put on YouTube. Um, why isn't being videotaped and then posted on the town website as opposed to being, uh, something that's a worldwide form?
Well, we're only, as a board, we can make our own decision, we're only obligated to follow what the state law. Government, we don't, we are, we don't have to listen to the council. They have no bearing on what our decisions are. At all. So really, it's, it's kind of up to us, I, I don't really want to be all over YouTube myself.
So, if I can, uh, this is something that I anticipate going to come up with town council at some point. And the policy the town council has, is they don't have an issue with their meetings being broadcast. And they want a uniform standard across all boards and commissions of the town. So that's where, that's where the debate is, that's where, that's where the, that's where the debate is going to lie, and it's.
It's not a debate.
It's not a decision that we can make tonight, and it's not a decision that we should make tonight, it's a, it's, it's. Simply, all this is a policy question. That it's as yet unresolved between the town council and the different commissions, and that's something that's going to have to be addressed to town council, it's not something you can ask the board.
Right, and that's why I asked you to look into it, because there's other boards and commissions that aren't being taped in the same manner. And again, we're being thrown on YouTube and we're thrust out in the public spotlight on an international forum. And it, it allows people to micromanage, micromanage and scrutinize reactions, conversations, um, if anybody speaks off the cuff accidentally, um. It poses a whole host of problems that I don't want to subject any of us to. A lot of us have businesses that don't want people in this, in this day and age turning around and retaliating against us, because they don't like something, they don't like what we. Look like, they don't like what we said, um.
Or they missed half the conversation.
And that happens a lot too, they, they show up at one meeting and then they hear something and they don't, they're, they're not stacking together all of the chapters of the book, they're reading the middle.
I think your point is all about context, right?
Yes, yes, and so, yeah, it's chip fire.
Um. You know, I'm an outsider here, right?
That's.
No, we're all.
Well, but, but really from a. I actually think transparency is a good thing. You know, um, does it mean that sometimes we have to stop and think about what we're saying? Yeah, I mean, uh, but we're, we're actually here being, we're representatives of the town. So, and it's hard to make, sometimes I really want to voice personal opinions, I, I really, I do, there's a struggle for me sometimes. Is separating personal opinions from what my task is here as a zone board member. Sometimes there's some conflict. But, and it's not easy, but I actually think that this is, you know, being on this board, we're actually accepting, when we applied for this. We're accepting that responsibility. And I think part of that responsibility is being open and transparent to our talent. So, I understand what you're saying, is that we, it's, it's again, which.
No, I'm gonna, yeah, I have a bottle, I'm trying to be patient.
No, but what I'm saying is, it is, it's, it's tough, because we're all, you know, separate from this, I'm saying, we have to keep our personal things separate from this, but people look at us and see the personal side. So it's, so, it's not an easy division. But, just my personal feeling is. I think that anyone that wants to see what we're talking about here should see it. Um, I, maybe it doesn't necessarily need to be recorded video wise, but I actually do feel like at a minimum, we should have. Like audio, because there was a thing that was, and that's, and that's great, um, but. In general, one of the things I thought was actually good about the pandemic, one of the few things that was good. In general, one of the things I thought was actually good about the pandemic, one of the few things that was good about it. Was it actually gave an avenue for a lot of people in this town to participate in local government. Because they have the option. And I just am uncomfortable about taking that option away now. You know, that's, that's all.
That's, that's fine, and that's a personal opinion.
Yeah.
And, and again, the transparency. Comment, and I don't mean this in a, in a negative way. We're a very transparent parent board. I'm not implying that we're hiding anything. We did not. None of us. Right, none of us signed up to be videotaped.
There are circumstances where we can't have.
You've been on long with fifteen. But, a lot we've, we all got put on here. Nobody ever made us aware that we're gonna be videotaped and put on an international database in format that will never go. Right?
I'm good on the town website, though.
The town website, I'm fine. I take, I take exception, I take exception to YouTube, because they censor things. Right now, if I said a couple of things, it would be perfectly within my right to say, not to a person, but in general terms, that they would instantly shut it off. Right? And and then it's wrong. It's wrong that somebody outside of this room can now censor us for different things. Or take exception to what we have and then retaliate against us when we don't even know who the heck they are. Right? We're town servants. We got appointed, we're volunteers. We're not, we didn't get elected. We are volunteers that are doing a town job for free. And several of us has been on here for a long time, and if I got paid for what the hell I put in time wise. I'd have a nice pension right now, working for the town. Same with these guys, right? We never signed up for being videotaped. This is something that was evolved and it was thrown upon us, and there's no clear reason as to why. I understand why they're doing it. It keeps a different record. We're very open and honest. We have an audio that's recorded. We take minutes, and then when we get in hearing situations where there's any appeal, we have a transcription sits here and all things transcribed, which is normal. There's courtrooms around this country, including in the state or an island and in this town. They are not recorded and put on YouTube. We have a probate court. They don't record it, put on YouTube. If you're in, if you're in court, we have an attorney, we have two attorneys. If you're in court, is that all posted on YouTube?
It is, it is.
All of them?
Most calendars are posted on YouTube.
Calendars?
The actual hearings, yes. So I'm sorry, that wasn't clear. Calendar meaning the hearings for different types of matters.
And I'm all for, I'm all for open government. I have no problem. We, we are meeting the hurdle. In multiple ways, and and again, I, I have no problem with that videotape and put on the town website. People do have to take the time to attend a meeting, to read all the chapters of the book. Or not watch a selected YouTube video, because it's convenient and they can tap it on their app and watch it at lunchtime. Right? We, we've had it happen over the years, where people continually come in.
The charity.
At the ninth inning, and then want us to recircle the wagons and go all the way back to pre app. Because they did not attend.
But one thing that we can actually, so first of all, I know that politically I differ.
It's irrelevant to the discussion right now.
But no, but my point is, is I, in my time in these ones here, I've not actually heard you guys say in our meetings, anything that was inappropriate or that you should be afraid of.
What do you mean by politically here?
Well, I'm just, I'm saying, we, we can all, we have politically different views. We, some, we just.
But again, that's.
My, my point is, no, what I'm trying to say is that. Being seen differently, I've, I've not actually heard you guys say anything in the meeting that I think you should be afraid of having on. Uh, YouTube video. And the reason I bring that up is, we shouldn't, none of us actually should be afraid of what's being recorded, because in this room and under this context. We should actually not be saying anything that is so politically charged that we might then feel we're gonna get.
There's, you're talking about politics, Chip, we have not.
No, the, the point, the point. The, the point that I'm trying to say is, I, I see where you're, where you're coming from. So, and so that is, if, if we just, if we are all cognizant of what we're actually doing when we're here in this room. And we speak honestly. And on point from what, what we're charged with doing in here. Why, why would we be afraid of anyone seeing us on YouTube? That's my question.
That works when people are rational and rational people watch it, and you're a rational person, even despite obvious.
To yourself, that's not.
This board has zero, zero political, I don't even know what parties anybody is, I could kid. We have a job is to uphold the town zoning ordinance.
You've done a really good job of that.
And that's it, period. But I will tell you, from having a business where I have an open door, over the years, I've had numerous applicants who have come in either with accolades, because we did something good. Or PO, because they didn't like something that the board did. And then I get stuck in the conversation in my business about town business, about a group of objective people, and I'm one vote amongst five. Right? And that's where it goes wrong, because now somebody's gonna sit on the other end of that camera that I don't even know. And they're gonna ostracize me because they didn't agree with my objective opinion, thinking I have a bias when I don't have.
Sure, here's, here's a point, this is probably all I can say, but um, I, I think going to maybe to Chip's point is, you know, if you're a member of a public community, you sign up for this. You volunteer for it and weren't drafted, um, you do have to respect a certain level of public scrutiny. But let me, let me do it this way, because I'm not sure. We do have a town council liaison, right? I'm gonna reach out. I, I think, I think, you know, it makes sense that. This issue be, I'm sure he's already aware of the issue. This is probably something that town council would probably wanna hear about and something that maybe the, the policy discussions that we're having. Tonight should be probably more properly aired in front of the town council, I'm both, from, from all perspectives.
Point, here's the point. We don't have to answer to the council. We don't care one bit what they got to say. It's up to us on what we wanna do. No, we do not answer to the council.
Listen, I, I don't, I don't disagree with you on that point, but if this is a policy decision that rests with the town council.
They can't.
They'll tell us, and if it is, then there's no point in discussing it.
They can't oppose a policy on this board.
But this, what I would, what I would suggest is let's use the town council to our advantage here. So, so look, I mean, I, I, really, in general, if you look at this at a broader umbrella. The town council, the town itself, should be doing something to protect the boards and commissions. The boards and commissions are all volunteer people. When we, when we all volunteer for this, not only are we committing our time. A significant amount of time, but we're actually putting ourselves out there. Should it be on us to then try to protect ourselves from the things that John's talking about?
It's happened to me and my family.
I know, I'm sure, trust me, I'm sure. And this is where I would like then to say, town council. Protect us. You know, you know, but maybe, maybe that's naive.
There's no, there's no way for them to do that. That's why I'm bringing up this discussion. And I don't know the answer. I'm not someone who's on that. I'm asking the powers to be, and I don't. I'm in, I'm in my right world with Ronnie. I don't disagree with him, but I do it against the law. Because the council cannot make, they do not pull rampages when it comes to zoning decisions. They can't change. Policy is, we're not telling them to think at ten o'clock.
Tomorrow, so.
As far as how the board is run, I will never see any council member ever come in and give us some, any guidance as to how our board is run, not any board. I gave, I gave more instruction on how this board is run than anyone has ever. When you, when you got voted on this board, did anybody give you any instruction? They handed you a book, and they said welcome to the board.
I appreciate what you, I ask questions. I really do appreciate, like, maybe you talk, but let's, this is how it works.
Our council does not know how our board is run. Mike Geary does, because he was on the board. Dan, when you got on, when you got on the board, did anybody hand you the book and say, Dan, this is how a meeting is run? No, they said, here, kid, here's your book. Right?
I learned by Thurman.
Thurman took me as an alternate. Thurman Stokes, who was a longtime board, if I sat back here for one meeting, he got up out of his seat, sat back there, and he said, you ain't gonna learn any younger kid. And he knew I had a big mouth and he threw me in front of, he threw me to the wolves, didn't he? And it was in the middle of a very contentious hearing on an appeal that. I learned pretty quick what was going on, but nobody ever get, you don't go to school for this. No, you get no guidance from anyone.
Don't forget, you're gonna see, if you're appointed full time, you're gonna see two and a half different councils. Yes, I mean, they, they come and go every two years.
And there's, there is no politics here whatsoever.
But and this is, and I, and I actually, I know we chit chat beginning, but when, when we're as a council, I really do appreciate that.
And none of, and, and sorry, and none of this is ever personal, right? Nobody has ever made any of this personal. I can be mad at you for this discussion in the beginning, and I'm not mad at you. I disagree with you. Sometimes you'll come off. Ronnie will too. Ronnie and I have had some epic battles in here over the years.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we've had some epic ones, and you know what? At the end of the day, we hit the parking lot, and you know what? I can, I can still give them a hug. No, but I mean, I don't, I don't dislike.
Make a motion.
Alright, so I'm gonna, but I want, I wanna get that resolved, so.
Right, did it get a second?
Second, do we get a, Ronnie, alright, we got a second? Any more discussion? All in favor, peace out. Meeting closed. Alright, nice chat.